Strong equipment, little thing doing stuff that I shouldn't.
Or you still have to go for pain medication in addition to that?
Really?
Pain medication?
Yeah, it's just a small amount. Oxycodone. I mean, it's the smallest dose. I used to take thirty percent.
Probably about.
They they make my head swell.
See, they don't. Nah, I've been taking it for twenty years.
I've had them before for different things.
Some people they do.
They they make me just pain my head.
Some people they do.
No, they don't put me so to get my head spinning all the time.
I saw your comments.
Well, you know, he will, um, he will authorize pain medication, don't you, in a way?
Yeah. Let us so out of the view that in this school for the.
And they want to get me on the road, so I have to come back.
Oh.
Yeah, they gave it to me to look at last Thursday and Friday, and I sacrificed the chicken. I did. I I matter of fact, I need to send county council a bill for my red band. I ripped that thing six ways from Sunday. There was a bunch of overrated, all it is is. You better do this, or we're gonna come out there and we're gonna find you. And it was nothing.
Yeah, that's the one. She won't do a very good job.
Really?
Zach said after, like, have I done it?
Yep, yep.
You thought he did a better job?
Yep.
Bitch, he likes to kill people.
That's what it was. It's nothing, but there's nothing to do about it. I don't know, man.
He's like, it's got cash.
You know, that's just it. We try to work.
Too many times it hurts.
Yeah, she uh, she don't put her dentists far. It never lasts as long.
Let the record show it's six oh one. We'll call our meeting to order. Sarah, we go to roll call, please.
Eddie Gokenhour.
Here.
Linda Barnhart.
Present.
Eric Goff. The Cannon Martin. Tim Lewis.
Present.
Daniel Gant.
Here.
Nick Deal. Derek Smith.
Okay, we do have a quorum this evening. We have one uh, of our members who uh, had another meeting to attend, so he's doing uh, a call in and he can hear what's going on, so uh, never fear, we do have a quorum. Okay, um, first item on the agenda is uh, and it is an amended agenda. Uh, we have approval of the agenda, which is amended.
Make a motion, we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Have a motion of Mr. Gant, second of Mr. Goff, to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The agenda, the amended agenda is approved. The next item is our sunshine law. Uh, did anybody sign in for that?
Looks like we have a David Jones from eighty-three Quebec Court Falling Waters.
Okay, do we, is Mr. Jones here? Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was, that was a public hearing sign. My bad.
Okay, uh, we have no one to speak under the open governmental process then. Uh, the next item is approval of the meeting minutes.
Make a motion.
It's approved.
I have a motion of Mr. Gant, second of Mr. Goff, to approve the meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Staying due to absence.
Okay, let the record show that there's one abstention by Mr. Lewis due to absence. The minutes are approved. The first public hearing we have this evening is Shadowhawk Properties.
The uh, first public hearing tonight is a request for consideration. The project is Shadowhawk Properties, West Virginia LLC, filed twenty-two oh two dash zero three nine, tied to thirty-five eighteen. The developer is Shadowhawk Properties, West Virginia LLC. It's located in the Jarrettstown District, tax map twenty-nine, parcel seven, and is located at four thirty-six Apple Harvest Drive in Glengarry, approximately zero point four miles from the Virginia State border. This project proposes a professional training facility on approximately a hundred and forty-nine acres to be served by private well and septic. At the August sixth, twenty-eighteen Planning Commission meeting, an exception to section seven oh five to not install sidewalks around along Route forty-five was granted by the Planning Commission. The owner is now requesting a one-year extension of the preliminary plan due to supply chain issues related to the global pandemic. The approved preliminary plan is compliant with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance and the stormwater ordinance. Therefore, planning and engineering staff recommends granting the request for consideration and extending the preliminary plan approval to April first, twenty-twenty-two.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Hello, my name, excuse me, my name's Lynn Katsik. I'm the owner of Shadowhawk Properties.
Uh, thank you. This is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments, it's your opportunity to make those known at this time. We would ask that you come forward, state your name, your address, and any questions you might have.
Saying no, ma'am. Make motion, the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Okay, there, let the record show that there is no public comment. Have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Miss Katsik or of the staff? I would like to ask, your supply chain is not doing well because of pandemic?
Uh, we, excuse me, everything got pushed back because the the group that's doing the excavation work, they got pushed back, so everything's just running behind.
Oh, okay. But do you have, are you using the property now?
Yes.
Are you? So you do have some clients that are coming in and using the project?
Yes, we did reopen, uh, back in May or June.
Okay, okay. And you're not having any supply issues with ammunition or fireworks?
Yes.
I guess you all.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready.
Yes, ma'am. Make motion, we accept staff recommendation, grant a request for consideration in extending the preliminary plan approval to April one, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
Have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Gant, to approve the staff recommendation, and that is to grant a one-year extension to April one of twenty-twenty-three. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Good luck. Next public hearing is um, for Project Atlas.
Yes, this is a public hearing for a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Project Atlas, filed twenty-one twelve dash four forty-nine. The developer is Level Five Data Center Group LLC, and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Arden District, tax map fifteen, parcel twenty-three. It is located on the south side of the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport, off of Novak Drive, approximately a quarter mile east of Winchester Avenue. This project proposes a four hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven square foot industrial data center with twenty thousand square feet of office space, associated turbine yards, cooling yards, and chiller plants. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On February second, twenty-twenty-two, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed. He found to be in compliance with Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary planning stage.
Thank you. Do we have anyone to represent the project this evening?
I'm Anthony Verdi with Gordon.
Anthony what?
Anthony Verdi with Gordon.
This is a public hearing. Again, if you have questions or comments regarding this project, please come forward and make those known to us at this time.
Saying no, ma'am. Make motion, the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no comments from the public. Have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions uh, of the applicant or of the staff?
If there are questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, advance the sketch plan with temporary plan fee.
Second. Second.
Okay, I have a motion of Mr. Gant, second of Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to uh, grant sketch plat approval and going to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. They're not letting Putin notice this is out there. All right, next public hearing is Valley Storage Enwood.
Yes, this public hearing is a request for major plan change approval. The project is Valley Storage Enwood, filed twenty-one ten dash three seventy-nine. The developer is Enwood Valley Storage LLC, and the engineers Frederick Siberton Associates. It's located in the Arden District, tax map eighteen L, parcels nine, fourteen, sixteen, and seventeen. The site's located at sixty-six ten Winchester Avenue, approximately a quarter mile north of Washington Street. This project proposes three new buildings totaling thirty-one thousand, two hundred square feet, a gravel parking area, and a new entrance. At the November seventeenth, twenty-fourteen Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to section eight oh one point one point ten of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance allowing for off-street parking to be gravelled. On January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The major plan change meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Trevor Frederick, engineer FSA.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your comments known. If you have questions, please come forward and let us know what they are. We'll see if we can get an answer.
Make a motion, we close public hearing.
Second.
Let the record show that there is no one to speak from the public. Have a motion of Mr. Gant, second of Mr. Gokenhour, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have questions uh, of the applicants representative or of the staff?
There are no questions. I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation, grant the major plan change approval.
Have a motion of Mr. Gant.
Second.
Second of Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant the major plan change. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next public hearing is Windmire Estates.
This public hearing is a request for consideration. The project is Windmire Estates, filed twenty-two oh two dash zero forty-four. The developer is Windmire Estates LLC, and the engineer is Integrity Federal Services. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map nine, parcel forty-seven point nine, and tax map thirteen, parcels one hundred, one oh one, and one oh two. The site's located on the west side of Winchester Avenue, approximately a quarter mile south of Running Mead Road. This project proposes eighty-seven townhome lots and four commercial lots on eighteen point seven acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one Planning Commission meeting, the applicant was granted approval to submit plans designed under the two thousand and four Berkeley County subdivision ordinance while complying with the twenty-sixteen stormwater management ordinance. The applicant is requesting an extension of the approved administrative plan change, which expired on February thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, to allow time for the MPDS permit to be obtained. The section one, phase one final plat has been submitted and reviewed by both the engineering and planning departments. After the last final plat review, the MPDS permit was the only outstanding item needed to pursue final plat determination. The MPDS permit was received by our office on March first, twenty-twenty-two. Once the section one, phase one final plat is approved and recorded, the project will not require any further extensions. Planning and engineering staff recommends approval of the extension since the MPDS permit has been obtained.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. I'm Howard Mann, one of the owners of the project.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If you have questions or comments, please come forward and make those known at this time. Let the record show that there is no public comments.
The public hearing be closed.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. You gotcha. Have a motion of Mr. Goff, second of Mr. Gant, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do, the planning commission, do you have questions of Mr. Mann or of the staff?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay.
What, Doug, this may be more for you. What actually uh, triggers the traffic study? But I see that this traffic study was received in two thousand and six. And I'm sure that within the sixteen years, there's been a quite a bit of change in that report.
There has probably been change, but this was vested in granted approval in two thousand and six, and all we could request was the updated DOH entrance permits, which, you know, DOH is given it without updating the traffic study. Because it was based on the number of homes or residences, if we will.
So that was the trigger?
Yes.
Okay.
Was there MRNA changes to the project? Was it always uh, commercial and townhomes?
It was always commercial and townhouse.
Was it all?
But the DOH did require us to put in a turning lane, which I thought, I I doubt if they were required that back when that was originally in there, although I'm, I don't go that far back with the project.
You're probably correct.
And I think that was the reason why they were willing to, you know, let us go with, without changing.
Okay, just traveling south, turn lane?
Turn lane, traveling south.
South, yeah. Nothing coming north, center of turn.
Whoever gets there first. Whoever gets there first.
Let let me defer to the engineer.
Mr. Chad Wallen with Integrity Federal Services.
Thank you.
They are requiring a dual turn lane.
Dual turn lane.
So large areas, it is substantial. There's no, much, much more they could ask.
Is that installed already?
No.
Okay. Any further questions?
No, ma'am.
Okay, ready for a motion?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion, we accept uh, staff recommendation, approval of extension since the MPDS permit has been obtained.
Second.
Have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, and I'll take a second of Mr. Goff, so he doesn't feel left out.
That's right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
The next public hearing is Potomac Station. Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing for a request for final plat approval. The project is Potomac Station P U D, phase three, lots two twenty-nine through two thirty-six. The file number is uh, twenty-two oh one dash zero two three. Developer is Panhandle Homes, and the engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, tax map fourteen, parcel three, and is located on the northwest corner of its intersection of Interstate eighty-one and Hammond Snow Road. This final plat proposes eight single-family attached lots on approximately zero point six zero acres to be served by public water and sewer. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff, staff recommends final plat approval, contention upon receipt of a surety in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twelve cents, plaid to be released upon receipt of the surety.
Okay, do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening. Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sianovich. Uh, let the record show that Mr. Gant is recusing due to conflict, uh, but will stay in the room to maintain a quorum. This is a public hearing. If you have questions, now's your opportunity.
My name is David Jones. I reside at eighty-three Quebec Court, uh, which is part of the Potomac Station. Um, pardon my ignorance, but recently moved here from Chicago, so I've not attended a Berkeley County conference. Uh, one of the concerns that we have in this neighborhood is the traffic situation on uh, nine oh one and Vantage View Drive. The FS that's there, um, the gas station across the street, all of the additional homes that are coming into the area, which part of this would be part of that, Cardinal Point coming down. That intersection is becoming exceedingly dangerous, receiving near accidents there in this town. So I would just like to make sure, the planning commission, if there's something that can be done in this environment or whatever, that could be addressed and possibly could develop, could help address it.
Okay, I will tell you that the planning commission does not control the roads. We do require that there be adequate traffic studies done, which has been done on this project, as well as all of the other projects in that intersection down there. Um, and entrance permits um, provided by the Department of Highways. So there's not much that we can do about it. If the developer hears your comments and wants to make a comment about it, I'd ask to Mr. Sianovich to make that now.
Thank you.
This particular project you have before you receive includes, consists of eight uh, single-family residential lots attached to townhomes. Uh, we, of course, had to go to DOH uh, to get their approval, or an addendum to the permit that was issued previously for Potomac Station P U D. Uh, DOH did issue that addendum. With regard to the global question, you didn't mention Cardinal Point. Um, there is a threshold number of lots in Cardinal Point that will be permitted to be developed before improvement has to be done at nine oh one and T J Jackson. Um, quite honestly, quite honestly, our firm put together the plans for that improvement about two years ago. And uh, it's been under review by DOH. And I think the reason it hasn't been brought to the surface is we haven't approached that magic number with the Cardinal Point yet. And um, it's probably still gonna be a while until we get to that point, the Cardinal Point, uh, where we break the threshold that DOH prescribed when they issued the Cardinal Point entrance permits. And back to Potomac Station for a moment, this residential use that's proposed by the project before you receive it was uh, lands taken out of a commercial use or an intended commercial use. So the trip generation for this house most likely is considerably lower than what a commercial use, trip generation could be, should the property have been developed commercially.
The entrance that currently goes out onto nine oh one, is it controlled by uh, stuff like?
There's a signal there, and um, actually, I gotta think about that. Yes, there is a signal there.
Mr. Jones, there is.
There was another plan that we, was before you several months ago, which had a dedicated uh, turn lane off of T J Jackson. The funnel traffic is a dedicated right. I'm not sure that's been implemented yet. Though it's been approved by DOH, but I don't believe constructions are pushing.
Yes, sir.
Just so the planning commission is aware, DOH is planning major upgrades for nine oh one there for the entrance and exit of Interstate eighty-one. Hopefully to be completed around twenty-twenty-four. That was most of the contributions that went to it from the warehousing, the subdivisions, uh, several other things up there that can, that made contributions to that. That's timing right now is around twenty-twenty-four that we've seen in DOH's traffic studies and the comments and stuff, is when they're planning on having that implemented.
To expand on Doug's comments, as part of the Berkeley Ridge subdivision, uh, DOH permit for Berkeley Ridge required the addition of a dedicated right turn lane at the I eighty-one northbound off-ramp. And that work will be undertaken by Panhandle Builders, who is the developer of the Berkeley Ridge subdivision, section two subdivision. And that work will occur probably later this year. Not that that has a direct impact on the nine oh one T J Jackson intersection. But it's sort of part of the global improvements that Doug mentioned, that DOH is examining at the interchange.
So between now and then, we're just gonna have to kind of keep our fingers crossed, it sounds to be like, uh, unfortunately, the the triggers for that are, just haven't been met.
Well, that's why, if you remember the large warehouse behind Walmart, when that would came through, their main contribution was the signal at Brown Bay. And the reason why they were kind of left, you know, without having to go any further, the intersection at eleven at nine oh one, and then nine oh one to eighty-one was all those upgrades with the additional left turn lane to queue the trucks to be able to get on eighty-one, all of that was all, was already kind of cooked. So they're planning twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, is what DOH is telling the traffic engineers to look at that projection. So DOH is already using that future number to look at projections that are coming in today, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Does that kind of answer your question? How long have you been in this area just carry a?
We own the home, we bought the home in November of two thousand and eighteen, and we moved in September.
Okay, so you've seen the increase, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a busy area down there, yeah. Okay, if there's no further comments from the public, I'm ready for a motion to close.
So move.
Okay, have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Lewis, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, do you have additional questions um, of Mr. Sianovich or of the staff?
I I have no additional question, ma'am. I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, to accept a staff recommendation, final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twelve cents. Plaid to be released upon receipt of surety. Second.
All right, I have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval contingent upon receipt of surety in the amount of a hun, of eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and twelve pennies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Let the record show that Mr. Gant is now joining the meeting just for discussion. Um, next item for public hearing is Butler Crossing.
This is a uh, public hearing for a request for sketch plan advancement. The project is Butler's Crossing out parcel five, filed twenty-one oh nine dash three twenty-eight. The developer is Enwood Retail Ventures LLC, and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Mill Creek District, tax map six, parcel fifty-five point one. This site's located at the southwest corner of Jarrettstown Road and Sephora Boulevard. This project proposes a twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty square foot retail building with drive-through on approximately one point eight acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to section eight oh one, table eight dash one B, category fifteen restaurant with drive-through of the subdivision ordinance to provide parking based on category sixteen point B, general retail. Approval was contingent on the following note, parking provided is on a shared basis at five point one per one thousand square feet gross floor area per the I T E land use eight twenty. On November eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The sketch plan meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends advancement of the sketch plan to the preliminary plan stage.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Chad Wallen with Integrity Federal Services.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. It's your opportunity to make your comments known. Please come forward, state your name, and any comments you may have. Let the record show that there is no comments. Ready for a motion to close public hearing?
Make motion, public hearing be closed?
Second.
I have a motion of Mr. Gokenhour, second of Mr. Goff, to close public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Planning Commission members, how about you? Do you have questions of Mr. Wallen or of the staff?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, was, was this not part of the um, agenda a couple meetings ago in reference to parking where it was actually uh, privatized? Were there not uh, supermarket?
That was for the supermarket that was there that they wanted to have their own separate lot.
So they're not, you're not looking at? So they're not, you're not looking at wanting to share the?
No, sir, this one is a separate outlaw from that.
Okay, thank you.
Parking was contained on this.
Right, okay.
And it was, we, there was no comment from me, as I felt that the parking was in accordance with our regs, it was in accordance with ITE, and if it's, it did fall within our shared parking policy that we have been trying to develop, and also, this was a case where if there was a not enough parking, you know, it was really the retailers, and they wouldn't be able to reach for space, if they didn't have enough parking, so that's kind of where we laughed with it.
Okay.
I think we had another shared parking down, maybe on the north end of the county.
Yes. Of Lexington Drive, no, it was, no, it was, I'm referencing the food line.
Okay.
It was the grocery area that has a shared parking as well, but this is an out parcel adjacent to that grocery store and retail area.
Okay, good, thank you. If we have further questions, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation in advance of sketch plan and preliminary plan stage.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Goff, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant sketch plat approval to move on to the preliminary plan stage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing for this evening. We'll move into business, request for preliminary plan final plat, EAC Construction.
Yes, this is a request for preliminary final plat approval. Project is EAC Construction LLC. File is 2201-015, tied to 2107-238. The developer is Elmer Castillo, and the surveyor is Greg Yevrenetsky. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 11, Parcel 96, and is located 300 feet east of the intersection of Trallstown Road and Van Clevesville Road. The developer's proposing the creation of one 0.24 acre lot and one 0.26 acre residue to be served by public water and sewer. At the August 2nd, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 305, 4.1 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, requiring a two-acre minimum lot size to proceed through the preliminary final process. On March 2nd, 2022, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project had been completed and was found to be in compliance with the subdivision ordinance. The project is found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plat.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, ma'am, Greg Yevrenetsky, you're representing the client of the project.
Thank you, Greg. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Yevrenetsky or of the staff?
Ma'am, I'll make the motion, we accept staff recommendation for preliminary final plat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept the staff recommendation, and that is to grant the preliminary final plat for AEC Construction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Spring Mills Commons.
This is a request for final plat determination. Project is Spring Mills Commons, Lot 29B. The developer is Arnold Properties Inc., and the engineer is Fox and Associates. It's located in the Falling Waters District, Tax Map 14, Parcel 1.13, and is located on the east side of TJ Jackson Drive, approximately 0.35 miles south of Hammond's Mill Road. This final plat proposes the creation of a 3.4 acre parcel for the previously approved 210 storage units, which will not have water or sewer utilities. No waivers or exceptions have been requested. On February 22, 2022, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Steve Sianovich with Fox and Associates, representing the applicant.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Sianovich or the staff? First of all, let me show, tell you that Mr. Gant is recusing due to conflict.
Ready for motion?
Yep.
I make the motion, we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination, advertise for public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to grant final plat approval at an April 4 Planning Commission meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Let the record show that Mr. Gant is now back in session. Next item is Arcadia Springs North.
This is also a request for final plat determination. The project is Arcadia Springs North, Section 1, Phase 5, Lots 22 through 47. File is 2201-012. The developer is Monarch Development Group, and the engineer is Gordon. It's located in the Arden District, Tax Map 12, Parcel 29.3. Property's located on Van Clevesville Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of its intersection with Needy Road. The developer's proposing 26 single-family lots on approximately seven acres to be served by public water and sewer. At the July 1st, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the planning commission voted to approve the waivers to Section 305, 4.1, requiring lots to be greater than two acres in size. The waiver to Article 2, Section 201, Townhome Definition, reducing the continuous attached single-family units permitted in a stick from three units to two, to all duplexes on individual parcels. The waiver to Article 5, Section 504E, Table 5.3, reducing the lot width for single-family residents detached from 75 feet to 63 feet. And the waiver to Article 8, Section 801, Table 8-1A, reducing the off-site parking for single-family attached dwellings from three to 2.5 spaces per unit, with a minimum of 0.5 spaces per unit B provided off-site. At the September 16th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted an exception to Section 705.1 to not install sidewalks along Van Clevesville Road. On February 18th, 2022, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Chad Wallen, Integrity, we have the applicant.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of Mr. Wallen or of the staff?
Channel, it's 26 single-family homes on seven lots, what's the remaining acreage for development? Do you have any idea?
Well, I'll tell you.
Probably, yeah. Not much.
It's, the sketch plan was overall for quite a bit the second phase of this project. Come back in labors, another 80 acres, and find it. This specific plat, it's self-contained, it won't cost that many acres, but it's a large project. It'd rank it for phase six or seven.
Yeah, I think it was like six or seven hundred block.
Yeah.
To begin with. I just didn't know where you were in the project, that's all.
Yeah, this would put us at around 15,000.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
I make the motion that we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination, advertise a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Lewis, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing for final plat approval at a public hearing, on the public hearing on April 4th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
The next item is Shepherd's Cove Development.
This is another request for final plat determination. The project is Shepherd's Cove, Section 2, filed 2201-018. The developer is Shepherd's Cove Development, Inc., and the surveyor is The Magna Consulting. It's located in the Apeken District, Tax Map 9, Parcels 3.11 and 3.13. This property's located on Split River Way, northeast of the intersection of Scrabble Road and Cedar Lane. The developer is proposing six single-family lots on approximately 30 acres to be served by private well and central sewer system. No waivers or exceptions have been requested for this section. On February 17th, 2022, County Engineer Doug Smith, Doug Smith issued a letter stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Yes, Andy, I'll represent Shepherd's Cove.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions? I do. Is this really central sewer?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, people, an acre, all, you want property, you're not even putting it in the central sewer system.
Is that right? Wow.
All forced in there.
Okay. If there's no further questions, I have a motion.
Make the motion, we accept staff recommendation and grant advertising for final plat approval on April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gant, second by Mr. Gokenhour, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing to consider final plat approval on April 4th, 2022. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Looks like the last item is Butler's Crossing Commercial.
Yes, this is a request for final plat determination. The project is Butler's Crossing Commercial, filed 2109-346, tied to 2201-006 and 2112-446. The developer is Inwood Retail Venture LLC, and the engineer is Buller Engineering. It's located in the Mill Creek District, Tax Map 6, Parcel 55, and is located on Winchester Avenue and Jarrettstown Road. This final plat proposes a 400, or I'm sorry, 44,540 square foot grocery store, which is Lot 1G, a 14,400 square foot retail, retail building, which is Lot 1F, and five out parcels whose uses will be determined and approved in the future. The entire site is approximately 18 acres and will be served by public water and sewer. At the December 21st, 2020 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Appendix A of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, requiring right-ofways to have a 60-foot right-ofway. At the January 18th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, the developer was granted a waiver to Section 503B, Table 5-2 of the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance, requiring a five-foot setback. On December 10th, 2021, County Engineer Doug Smith issued a letter of approval stating that a review of the above-mentioned project was completed and found to be in compliance with the Berkeley County subdivision ordinance. The final plat meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, therefore, staff recommends final plat determination and advertising of a public hearing for consideration of final plat approval at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
Do we have anyone to represent the project?
Good evening, John Ruth Buller.
Thank you. Planning Commission members, do you have questions of the applicant or of the staff?
Here's another question, ma'am, I make a motion, we accept staff recommendation for final plat determination and advertise a public hearing, consideration of final plat approval, April 4th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Mr. Gokenhour, second by Mr. Gant, to accept staff recommendation, and that is to conduct a public hearing on April 4th to consider final plat determination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Staff counsel discussion, action motion. Jeff, do you have anything for us?
May I?
No? Laura?
May I? As usual.
Doug?
May I?
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goff. Let the record show that Mr. Goff is making a motion to adjourn at 6:44. Have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Gant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is closed.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.